We're going to open the meeting of November 18th, Board of Selectmen. Meetings of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on both Burling Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. We have approval of minutes. Do we?
No.
No minutes? Okay. Correspondence?
No correspondence this evening.
Okay. General public comment? General public comment anywhere? Lynn?
I'd just like to suggest that you review your policy on notification when it, as it pertains to liquor licenses. The gas station next to me, you all know where I live?
Next to the gas station.
Is coming in for a liquor license. There is a body-putt strip of land that belongs to property up and back between myself and the gas station, and I never received any notice about their, when they were putting in their tanks or when they're going for a liquor license. It's an unusual policy, most it's 300 feet or two neighbors. So if you could just take a look and see if it makes sense, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Got that on our list, Margaret?
Yes.
Is there anything else? Okay. We're going to start off with our Highway Facilities Superintendent. Hello.
You got a big version, mine didn't print out very big.
I'm older. I need bigger letters.
Okay, so it was a fairly quiet month of October. We had more tree complaints, surprise. My co-op student, we're looking for alternate sources for funding because we're basically, I'm out of money. We're waiting for some reimbursement funds to come back for part of that grant that we're on. However, I did get notification last week that we received another $2,400 from UMass Amherst to keep him employed, so kudos to UMass.
Good.
How long will that keep him around, Ish?
Five and a half weeks, which is 10 weeks because he's here every other week.
Oh, nice. Okay.
A lot of calls for trees down, we had some storm damage, putting a little bit of a strain on the overtime budget. Roadside mowing continued, we're pretty much done with that. We had a major breakdown with a big brush tractor. We had to put a lot of money into that to keep that up and running, but it's necessary. So we went ahead and did the repairs. We had one employee out with a work, non-work-related injury for 16 days, which kind of put a damper on getting some of our fall stuff done. We don't have all our leaves and mowing done for the, for the end of the year, but we'll get there. Snow and ice equipment's pretty good shape. Catch base and clean has been done. We did a neat little project with Bay State Roads and CMRPC with a training video on culvin inspections, which is going to become part of Bay State Roads Training Library when the, when the video is completed in the spring. So that's kind of neat, another little, put Burling on the map. I got one more day of tree removal coming probably the first week in December, and then that is pretty much depleted the tree budget for the year, so.
If you had the budget, would you be able to do it in the winter anyway?
It wasn't the best time to do it.
Is it?
Yeah. Little leaves.
Yeah.
We did some maintenance here at the building. Fred spent a couple of days on the roof cleaning the HVAC units. Actually should be done twice a year, but we haven't really had the time to keep up with that. We've only been doing it once a year.
What is that?
Bringing on the snow. We were out this morning, we went out at 4:00 AM this morning to put salt on the road to hopefully prevent icing, which didn't take place, but.
If you hadn't, it would have.
That's right. So it's been a long day for me.
Boy.
Questions?
No, go home.
Okay.
Drive carefully.
Thanks.
Don't fall asleep.
I know the cops.
All the defensive drivers will need somebody on offense or anything. There's something to do over and get them. They're waiting for you. No roof.
All right. Seeing as how it's only 7:10, do you, would you like to give your town administrator a report?
Sure.
Probably burn up 20 minutes.
You can read the whole thing. I'll try to keep it brief. First of all, and I was supposed to mention this last week, just for information for residents, the Burling Public Library is doing a long-range plan survey. Residents can take the survey. It's a Survey Monkey survey. So from the library's webpage, go, well, go to TownofBurling.com, and from the library's webpage, click on news and, or, under news and announcements, the link to the long-range plan survey will be there. So anybody interested, they are going to be closing this, I think, in the near future. So, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that we've gotten four quotes on HR consultants to develop a classification and compensation plan and to develop and/or update personnel policies and procedures. I am reviewing quotes this week. I'm going to discuss the quotes and the scope of services with Personnel Committee this week, and then I'll bring a recommendation to the board next Monday on recommended consultant. Or low quote. The, under finance, last week we held two different budget kickoff meetings. One was held on Tuesday morning at 10:00 AM, and that was primarily for departments, and we had really good attendance at the department heads' meetings, so we incorporated the budget kickoff meeting into the department heads' meeting, so departments got their information. And then on Thursday night, we had a budget kickoff meeting for, primarily for boards and committees. It was lightly attended, so I ended up having to distribute a lot of packets into boxes today. Hopefully people are very careful about reading the instructions. Last week we talked a tiny bit about River Bridge mitigation agreements, and I've done a lot more homework on that, and I'm preparing a much more extensive outline. It doesn't appear that we've hit any thresholds for payments yet. It is possible that there is one, but I have to determine how we're going to get the information in order to find out if we've hit that threshold. So I'll keep the board posted on that. On the library septic project, we do have a meeting this week on a second design option. So the group of us that met the first time, from, it's myself, Chris from the Select Board, Board of Health, Library, and Evan Carloni, the design engineer, will all meet and go over that second option and then determine our next steps with getting DEP involved. I am working on finalizing the Burling Memorial School Lighting retrofit project agreement. We've been going back and forth with legal reviews. I will have that ready for the board's execution on November 25th. Tax bills were mailed out last week. Residents are probably aware of this. If residents have not received their bill, they should contact the collector's office and inquire. So sometimes there is a delay in the bills being received by residents. And everything else is somewhat, I did, I did submit a capital request, just to put it on the Capitol Planning Committee's radar, that in order to move forward with large road infrastructure projects, we need to start programmatically funding engineering design, and that would allow us to qualify for major grants, complete streets, the transportation improvement program. So the projected engineering costs would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, for these very large projects. So we, we need to find a way to strategically fund the engineering for them. And we'll talk about the recreational marijuana host community agreement process later, so that's my report.
Thank you.
Quick question?
Yes.
You had mentioned that the meeting that you had that night for the budget kickoff was, had a fairly low turnout. How hard line are you going to be for the budgets to get in by the 10th of December at 4:30?
We're going to treat this as a pretty strict deadline. We have to in order to get the budget, in order to get the budget prepared.
So if you're late, you're flat from last year or from this year?
I think that's the way we're going to treat this. If, we will send out a reminder to try to get the budget requests in on time. If we don't get the budget requests, we either will not fill in the, the budget cells at all, or they will, or they will be level funded. So I haven't had a discussion with the Finance Committee on that yet, but I, yeah, we're going to be pretty strict with that. We have to in order to keep the budget process moving.
In a 2%?
One, one and a half on COLA.
COLA.
No, 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 for the budgets.
They did not set a bottom line percent increase, so I've actually cautioned that departments should be aware of Prop. 2.5 and make sure that we, we recognize those constraints.
I believe we're going to skip the first bullet under old business at this time. Am I correct? And so we'll move on to the marijuana host community agreement process?
I have.
Mary?
You asked him before, you had to afford.
Okay. I have asked for inclusion of this on the board's agenda because we are seeing a steady stream of requests from potential recreational marijuana, or, for potential recreational marijuana establishments. We are spending money, we are incurring legal costs on the town's part to negotiate host community agreements. So what I've presented here is a process that I think will help the town manage the flow of these requests a little better, and it will put, it will put different required steps in the appropriate places. For example, right now, we have received a few requests, we're currently negotiating two host community agreements, but neither applicant has scheduled or conducted the community outreach meeting yet. I propose in this procedure that the, that the community outreach meeting be moved up in the process so that the applicant shows a commitment to move forward with the town and so that the town's residents can have more information upfront about what's being proposed in town. There are a few things. This is a draft just for the board to review today, but I do plan on attaching the marijuana zoning bylaw to the procedure so that it's available for reference by all applicants. I also, I also recommend that in step three, that the, that it be clear that the community outreach meeting be funded, publicized, and paid for at the applicant's sole expense. And then on number five, I am suggesting that the town request an upfront payment of $5,000 that the town will hold in escrow to pay legal costs for the town council's review of the applications. And that fee would be required with the submission of the package containing the proposal materials.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
If the board has any questions over the course of this week, or just try to get them to me as, as early as possible if you have any questions or comments on the draft. Okay? Thank you.
We're going to move on to the FY '20 funding authorization.
Just add a logistical question. If we have a question regarding the host community agreement, do, shall we wait till the end? When, would you entertain any questions?
You mean, you mean this evening, the end of this evening?
The end of the meeting.
Okay.
That's, that's just a procedure. It's not a host community agreement that we're talking about.
So I just, because I walked in as you were speaking, so I just wanted to have.
Okay. So it was just a proposal?
For a policy?
For process to go through because we're incurring a lot of legal expenses.
Can you hand that to, or no?
Sure.
To make sure that people, if they come, are serious.
Right. I just wanted to, but if we have questions regarding that process and where we are in the process, I would just.
Well, this is just our first read-through.
Are you asking about where we are with the other, with the people who've approached us?
No, we are currently negotiating three host community agreements, is that correct? With the three establishments that have already come to us and have held proposals here at a selectmen's meeting?
Very preliminarily.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's what I, so, right.
But it's getting to the point where Margaret thought it would be a good idea to propose this, which has guidelines for anybody who's interested, including an upfront payment because it's going to deplete our legal.
Right.
Budget.
Proposed the outreach meeting.
And the outreach meeting is discussed in it. I just handed it to you.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's required. I understand that, so we're talking about.
Yes, but they will have to pay for it. It's just a process.
Yeah, totally understand that.
Yeah.
But with regards to just whether or not, you know, where, where we are in the negotiation process, I understand it's preliminary, but what exactly does that mean? And I don't have to ask this question now, I just didn't know when.
Unless you want to talk with Lornell offline.
That's fine. Yes, I can, through the chair, I can do that.
Yeah.
I'd be interested in hearing your conversation.
If there's others, yeah, I just.
That I wouldn't be able to hear if we're offline.
Through the chair, as far as, what we're talking about tonight, because we don't want to stray too far off the agenda, what we're talking about tonight is a procedure that I've recommended the board implement in order to control the flow of these requests coming into the town and to control the town's legal costs. So we're asking, we would be asking for applicants to start assuming the costs of conducting a community outreach meeting. We'd be asking the applicants to have a community outreach meeting first so that information gets out right away to the public, and we would be requiring that, that payment with an entire packet of materials the board could review in order to agree to move forward with host community agreement negotiations.
So that's, so that, you're saying in addition to the proposals we've already heard, so there's others coming into town?
Well, this could, this could go for the ones that we're working with now. Or no?
Through the chair, I don't know whether we could use this exact procedure, but we would certainly advocate for some of these items with the current parties, but this would be applicable to all proposers coming forward, moving forward.
So is there a process by which, and maybe this is something offline, but is there a process by which if, if citizens in town are curious as to where we are in the negotiating process, what it looks like now, you know?
I can speak to that through the chair. Negotiations are moving very slowly. We obviously can't divulge the content of the negotiations, but negotiations are moving very slowly. I think the town feels that it's important to be consistent with all applicants and not change the terms for one and not another, but I don't think we have, I don't think we're going to see any execution of a host community agreement in the next, I'd say probably the next several weeks. I don't want to, I don't want to move too far ahead, but things are moving very slowly.
Gotcha. So, yeah, and again, as, as concerned residents, there's really been a lot in the news lately, so this is an ever-evolving industry, so there's more and more growing concerns, and and it was just, so as far as a platform to express those concerns, and I know we can send in letters and send in emails, but is there anything that you are planning, I know it's not required, where you can hear some of these growing concerns with regards to entertaining, yeah, I guess, finalizing any agreements with these companies? Does that make sense?
I think if, if you were to have some kind of forum, you could invite us.
Well, I've done that before. It doesn't work.
I don't know what else to tell you.
Okay, so there really isn't a, a process for that, because there really is, you know, more and more things are coming to light, and I think we just, I, again, I know that we don't have a say in the agreement, but, but so there really isn't a platform.
I think too, I think too that we're constrained by what the state has recommended, and we have to follow certain.
Absolutely. And this is all within. This would be within that constraint.
The community outreach would be the forum. Yeah. I think if you have any further questions, I'm going to ask you to contact Margaret.
So, okay, so that would be the platform then in which we could voice.
For the time being, but it's just because this is not on the agenda, the subject?
It is.
No, just, no, just, just the policy was.
So, okay, so that was my original question. I could have held these questions for later when we report. I just wasn't sure where we were in the process.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. We're going to move on to FY '20 funding authorization of the festive events account. Margaret, do you want to?
Yes.
Bring us up to date on this?
Yes. 1870 Town Hall Manager Holly Loop has requested authorization to spend, I think there is a new total here, it's, it's not quite $500, from the festive events account to put wreaths, garland, and lights on the front of the town hall. And I, and I, I support her request.
And this is an up to $500?
Yes.
Correct?
This is actually an old, she has a 400. There's a, there's a new one that came this morning. I'll tell you what, I can get an exact.
Well, I mean, I think it does say, I'd suggest perhaps buying a few extra lights to have, have for wear and tear, so.
Yes, I think if the board.
I'd assume it was.
If the board approves up to $500, that certainly covers it. I believe it's $480 something dollars.
Okay. So questions, comments from the board?
I think it's awesome.
It's very pretty. I'd love to see the little candles if it's at all possible for the windows, those little, it's very New England.
You mean, you mean in each?
Yeah.
Repowered? It could be solar even.
Not in the window.
Yeah, you can. I have some.
Do you?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's possible, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah.
It's very New England tradition. It's pretty, it looks pretty.
Yeah. So do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And I guess I would add that it would be in lieu of the tree lighting.
That's correct. Yes.
Yes. In the center of town. I mean, in lieu of the one tree that we, not the ones that Indian Head will donate and do on First Parish Lawn, but the one tree that we previously had supported with cost. Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we want to do board questions and comments very quickly?
I can do mine quick, quick.
All right.
Look like a bunny. So over the weekend, I followed up with all of you, I went through the initiatives that are currently on the selectmen page, provided updates that I thought where they were, so I guess I'd ask for you to go through, there really isn't anything for Margaret to do on them. Yay! So, so if we can just go through the email update, what, anything that I might have misspoken on, and we can send it to Mary and then get those done, clear.
Okay.
Okay. And then I had also sent out over the weekend, kind of goes along with the lighting up of the 1870 houses, a flyer that I can distribute to the businesses in the center of town, so the general store, the bank, National Lumber, 19 Carter, and the library, to get them in the festive mood and just ask them, it's certainly not a requirement, just to light up their facilities, it'll just look nice coming into the town. I think it will complement greatly the 1870. So if you want to take a look at what I sent through, see if there's any wordsmithing changes that you want to it, if not, I can start to deliver those next week.
Did you?
And shout out to Liz Ford, my graphic designer, extraordinary.
No, haven't had a chance yet? Okay. So we'll talk about it next week?
Sure.
Okay.
I have one quick one.
Okay.
I'd like if possible to have a policy for removing people from committees and so that we're consistent about when there, we got a request. I'd like an actual policy for that if possible.
Okay.
What's, what needs to happen and what criteria you remove by how it proceeds?
Removed as I quit or removed as?
Removed as in not showing up or?
Okay.
Those types of things.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to draft one? I'll take a look at a few templates if possible and get them to the board. Okay. All right. It's 7:30. So we're going to open the public hearing for the all alcohol restaurant license transfer. This is Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12 Restaurant, and this is the New Flat Penny LLC, or the Flat Penny Bar and Grill, 263 West Street, Burling, Mass., with manager Joan Connor. And we'll be talking about the common viculars license, the entertainment license also, and the Sunday entertainment license. So I don't know if it's necessary if we read the public comment guidelines at this time. They are posted over here in case anybody's interested. This is a hearing of the Burling Board of Selectmen as the local licensing authority relative to the application on liquor license transfer for the Flat Penny. This hearing is being recorded for transmission on both Burling Cable Television and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. Notice of this hearing was published 10 days prior to this hearing in the Clinton item, and I asked the clerk of the board to read the notice of the record.
All right. Town of Burling Board of Selectmen, public hearing pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Mass. General Laws as amended. Application has been made and information given for approval of a transfer of a restaurant all alcohol beverage license from Burling Commercial Realty LLC to New Flat Penny LLC, to be known as Flat Penny Bar and Grill, located at 263 West Street, Burling, Mass., and particularly described as follows. A single-story building containing approximately 2,332 square feet, dining room, kitchen, two means of ingress and egress into the dining area, so left and a right, third means through the kitchen, attached patio area adjacent to the parking and main building, which accommodates 20 patrons seasonally. The hearing on the above application will be held on Monday, November 18th, 2019, at 7:30 PM in Room 206 of the Burling Town Office's building, 23 Linden Street, Burling, Mass. All parties interested should plan to be attend. Burling Board of Selectmen, Christine Keane, Lisa Wysocki, and Margaret Stone.
I will recognize individuals one at a time to speak during this hearing, and members of the board will be recognized should they have any questions or comments during the hearing. We have read basically the description of the premises for which the liquor license transfer application is made, as well as the common vic and the entertainment licenses. We have information in our packets as far as the sketch, and I guess I would ask for a confirmation that the patio extension is not going to be included at this time.
It's not.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. So I want to confirm that the license premises shall be the same for all of the approved licenses, which means excluding the patio.
That's correct.
And the sketch, there will be a description in sketch will be attached to each license. Shall we do the liquor license transfer application first as far as?
Yeah, I would say so.
One of the things that we need to talk about is the request for hours, and you One of the things that we need to talk about is the request for hours, and you were requesting operating hours from 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Monday through Saturday. Is that correct?
No, 11:00 AM.
Okay.
To, are you referring to operating, just flat out operating hours, not like a?
Well, I had the website information, which was, I believe, 11 to 10, Monday through Saturday, and 11 to 9 on Sunday?
Right.
Is that going to continue?
Yeah, well, we, we would like to have the option to be open slightly after 10 on the weekends, like Friday, Saturday.
Okay.
Maybe till midnight.
All right.
But 10 on the weekdays, that's fine. I think that our current license allows us 11 to midnight just about every day of the week.
I guess I would.
Right, absolutely right.
Through the chair, the liquor license, the current liquor license hours are Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
That's the current?
Current.
Okay. Which?
We don't need that.
Which isn't even appropriate, because we can't do that until 11.
So, 11:00, 11:00 AM to midnight, basically, is what we'd be asking for every day.
So, 11:00 to 12:00. And Sunday, you would have to do it 10 to 12, unless, go ahead.
Through the chair, the board can actually authorize 11:00 AM, so anything before noon, it requires the boards, the board to authorize. So, anytime between 10:00 AM and 12:00 noon, the board can.
Is that just for Sunday, though?
Sundays.
Just Sunday?
Mm-hmm. So, through the chair, the applicant is looking for 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Monday through, Sunday through Saturday?
Right.
Okay. And Sunday would be 10, 11?
11.
11 to?
11 to. Yeah, I mean, we'd like to have the option to stay open until midnight, but we have been closed by 10.
What determines that option?
We determine the option after the 11:00 PM.
Okay.
Correct.
Until, what is it, 11:00 AM? Correct?
So, we need to decide tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, well, if, I mean, if you're, if you're approving it, you should have the hours in there, so.
Yep.
And you're right, 11:00, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM is sort of statutory minimum. After 11:00 PM is up to the board.
And historically, this has been open, or the license has stated 12:00 PM.
1:00 AM.
Or 1:00 AM.
Yeah, but it also said 8:00 AM, which isn't even possible, so.
I get that, but it's still, historically, the license has.
Yeah.
Requesting 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Okay, and that is the weekdays?
All weekdays.
Okay, gotcha.
Sunday through.
All right. All right. And you have requested the entertainment hours. I guess might as well talk about the hours for that now. Thursday through Sunday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM? Is that correct, Margaret?
Till, till 10:00 PM, but yeah. We don't have any need to be, have entertainment until midnight. We've never done that.
Okay. Through the chair, the application does specify 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, so clarification is, is helpful with that.
Yeah, 10, please. It would need to be 10.
And through the chair, just a question. I just want to confirm that's Thursday through Sunday. That's what the application is?
Thursday through Sunday.
Thursday, yes.
Thank you. Oh, here they are, here's the current hours. Tell me at the bottom. Okay. What's the next thing we need to do as far as the?
Local reviews?
Yep. Why don't we, do you want to go over some of those, or shall I have the chief speak to his?
Through the chair, the chief is here. If you'd like to just speak to his, his letter?
As requested, we did a, for lack of a better term, statute, a criminal background investigation and a check of character. We checked all three applicants in the LLC, and we found no, no reasons to preclude them from having a license.
Okay.
So, could you just state so that everyone knows which three?
It was Stephen Scott, Greg Sanborn, and Joan Connor, and Joan being the manager of record.
Okay. And the building commissioner, I, go ahead, Margaret.
Okay, thank you. So, the building commissioner did, did do a review along with the, the fire inspector. The building commissioner did note that there are some code issues that, that need to be addressed. I don't know if you want me to go into detail with the code issues.
Were they copied on this?
I think they were actually there during the.
They were there.
Okay, they were there during the inspection. So, there, he did list seven, seven code issues that need to be corrected. And if you'd like me to continue, I can go to the fire.
Sure.
Marshals. The fire marshal noted eight items that, that would require, that would require attention. So, did you, through the chair, go ahead. Did the applicant receive the copy of the fire inspector's report as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do you, are you, do you understand the things that are?
Very simple things, yeah, we understand them.
Okay, just make your chair.
And through the chair, the last reviews were asked to be conducted by the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health. I don't know the current status on those at the moment. I did convey some emailed information. They provided me, I conveyed that to Attorney Mears of the applicant's attorney.
Yes, and you have those?
Yes, well, I think most noteworthy is I have some documents that I can submit from the company we retain, McClure Engineering, Inc. There had been a question about water testing. McClure had indicated that that testing under the prior owner had stopped at a point, and therefore, there was not compliance. We have them under contract. They have documentation that they've given us showing the work that they've done and will continue to do, and I'm, I'm happy to submit that for the, the board's review.
Was this the drinking water?
It had to do with the drinking water documentation for drinking water monitoring, which was not being complied with previously. So, again, they addressed that. We have the receipts showing the testing that they've done, and the fact that they will act as our certified operator. Previously, the D E P had complained that the certified operator, I believe, had been listed as Mr. Smith. We have retained McClure to stand as our certified operator, and I'd like to just submit the documents for the board to look at.
Through the chair, if I could.
I was just going to say that I believe there was also a food service permit application that needs to be filed.
So.
And, and a full inspection, like the kitchen?
Yep, the kitchen inspection.
And a Title V. Those were the other Board of Health issues.
Right. So, with the food inspection, naturally, we understand, although we haven't closed, we would naturally expect that any perishables, any food goods that we have there will be disposed of if they are not up to standard. I will let the board know that we have installed a new refrigeration system, a new dishwashing system as well. So, we expect, with the Board of Health, I believe it was just out about a week or 10 days ago, and we would expect that upon another inspection, which we anticipate, that we will be in compliance. As far as the Title V goes, we believe that we currently have a passing Title V. I know an issue was raised about if we increased capacity. There may be an issue there. As we've noted, we will not be seeking any extension of the operation with the patio. We understand if we're looking to do that, we would need to make sure through the building inspector, one, that we have the proper permit if a special permit's required. And again, if there's any increase in our capacity, we understand that the septic test would also address that as well. But currently, we're not looking to change, again, our occupancy numbers at the establishment.
Right. Can you get a copy of your past Title V?
I'm sure we can, yes.
Okay.
Chair?
Yep.
May I ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
Through the chair. Have you reached out to the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health yet to schedule an inspection, or to schedule the inspections?
Yes, I spoke to Bridget.
Okay.
Well, I spoke to her office. Her, her voicemail was full, so they're getting the message to her. I've spoken and dealt with her already in the past, so I'm sure that as soon as she calls me, we'll make arrangements for her to come back.
Okay, thank you. Was there anything else, local reviews? I did have a little bit of a concern about the parking, and I know that, I believe, you may be grandfathered as far as the parking is for right now. And so, I guess I would ask Chief Galvin, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Have you noticed any evenings when perhaps that it might be necessary to have a detail?
Not, not as of yet. You know, there has been some overall on-street parking on Randall Road at times, but I think other than a special event, maybe if they had some sort of entertainment that caused a large influx, there hasn't been anything yet, and I'm sure that we could talk and work through some things if something was going to happen in the future that would require a police presence there.
Okay.
I would think if the, if the occupancy stayed as is, you know, we would have the same issues that have been going on for years there, with the lot being not big enough, but not having a huge influx of additional cars.
Yeah. Like, just that I had heard, you know, from different parties that it is an issue.
Yeah, I mean, there's cars that sometimes are parked close to the tracks and something like that, and, but it's not something that we get an overwhelming amount of calls about or have dealt with, or have needed to have a police officer there to direct traffic.
Did you have anything to add to that, Brian?
Well, just typically, I think, when I see a licensed entertainment or alcohol as something that, that has a condition in about police details, it's more like a nightclub or something, which sort of routine issues, this doesn't sound like that. And, you know, if, if down the road it presented an issue, or if the chief thought it presented an issue, you could take it up again, but it doesn't sound like it's really necessary to.
It's something we can monitor.
Yeah.
That would be helpful. Okay. As far as the liquor licenses, is there any other questions from the board?
So, Greg Smith is not involved at all?
I would say no, he's not involved at all.
That's my understanding as well. Did you want to riff that?
Yes, again, James Mears, on behalf of New Flat Penny. Previously, I'd had some communication with the town council about Great Penny potentially as a leaseback situation with Mr. Smith. Again, with the, all the issues that developed up until the closing, even thereafter, we felt that was not in our interest. We didn't think it was in the town's interests, and therefore, we've essentially withdrawn that as a potential plan going forward. We believe that we've gotten on top of a lot of the issues that were left. As the board may be aware, there were tax problems in terms of real estate taxes not being paid, the Department of Unemployment not being paid. Those issues have continued to come up. We just today had to, again, even though the restaurant hasn't been active, our, our heating went out. We realized that propane supplier had not been paid previously, so we had to address that, that bill as well. Again, I indicated earlier, the dishwashing system was not up to code, was not heating water sufficiently. There were efforts that were made to just, in order to make it work from time to time, turn up the heat on the boiler. We just don't think it's, it's in frankly our interest, and beyond that, the town's interest to go forward with Mr. Smith having any involvement. I've talked to town council about how that potentially affects the license itself. Fortunately, we're here at the end of the year. I know I've also had communication with the town administrator about Mr. Smith and a renewal of the license. We're frankly asking you to consider us as a new licensed applicant and treat our application in that fashion. Again, we just don't see any value to, to asking the town to have to deal with the situation with the suspension of Mr. Smith and then involving him going forward. And therefore, that is why we've completely stepped back from, that is a possible option.
Okay.
Yeah, I can address that, too. I know we had some back and forth that, you know, Mr. Smith is the one who, whose name is on this license. If, if it was going to be renewed, and apparently he doesn't have any interest in that, he would have to sign the renewal this month. However, under the statute, it says that if renewal is not signed in November, then in December, you have to treat it as a new application and have the whole hearing and everything. The license will, you know, even though it's under suspension, the license will exist in his name through the end of December.
December.
Yeah. And so, I, I did not speak to anybody at the ABCC today, but it does strike me that, you know, because it's in his name, I think we need to treat this as a transfer still, although it's, that may be sort of semantics. And that, I mean, I would think if the board, if the board does approve the applications yet before you tonight, and it goes into the ABCC, it's, you know, I, I think by the end of December, they will be able to do what they need to do. So, in effect, they'd be getting a new license in January anyway. But you can't issue, I don't even know if you have one available, you can't issue a new license for a property that has one already. So, it's technically, this is still a transfer, but.
But it'd be a legal transfer if he is not able to sign the document.
He gives it up.
Not until the end of December, though.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, the license itself sits there, you know, is, is still.
My understanding is that's normal when there's a change of ownership, though, right? Based on what you've told us previously, it's normal for there to be a leg period between when the paperwork changes?
Yeah, it always, you know, it has to, if this was June, you know, it'd be a different story, because it would get approved over the summer, and you'd have to issue a new license in the new party's name. You know, here, because of the timing, it's going to be pretty close, I think, anyway.
So, then technically, there still would be no liquor license through the end of December, so no buying or selling of alcohol?
There, the license that's there is under suspension.
Excuse me?
The license that's there is under suspension, and as we talked about before, Mr. Smith is the licensee, and, you know, I think he'd have to be involved in order to activate it again. But, but I don't think that's what the applicants are looking for. But I don't think that's what the applicants are looking at. They just want to get everything done and sort of start fresh, if that makes sense.
So no liquor through the end of December?
Not while the license is under suspension, correct?
Okay.
So that clearly is our position. We don't expect or want to put the board through a whole process of deciding under what circumstances Mr. Smith's suspension would be removed. Again, as the town council points out, if this were February or March or May and the license was not going to be up for a new license until January 1, it would be problematic. But we're near the end of the year. We understand the matter will then go before the ABCC. We don't expect Mr. Smith to sign his renewal. We don't expect him to appeal the board's suspension. So we understand that that is essentially status quo, and that's why we're essentially asking you to, even though it is a transfer license, a transfer of license, to treat us as essentially a new license applicant for January 1 is the idea.
How long does ABCC have to react to the license-ish?
Um...
Ish?
Right. I mean, I think a few weeks unless they find some problems, and it sounds like a lot of the problems with unemployment insurance and that sort of thing, they've already taken care of. So I would certainly expect before the end of December, they would be able to say yes or no.
Okay.
Chair, may I ask a question of council?
Sure.
So this is an application for a transfer of license. Would you expect that there would be any issues at ABCC in the town's interest in treating this as a new license application?
I mean, as, again, because of the timing, I think you can sort of, as a practical matter, look at it as this is a new party, you know, let's start fresh on January 1, however you want to look at it. But because there's an existing license there for the next six, five or six weeks, you really need to treat it as a transfer because they won't allow you to issue a brand-new license for a property where there already is one.
And through the chair, yes, that answers part of my question. But the ABCC still will not get the license, the mandatory license renewal form, right? So they're not going to get any report of a license renewal in this particular case?
Correct. And so they would say, well, if there's no renewal, then this license expires on December 31st unless something else happens to it, like a transfer.
Okay.
Okay, so the transfer accomplishes what?
Both.
No?
So it just kind of reverts, it reverts to this in essence?
If we do the transfer tonight, what happens?
The paperwork goes into the ABCC, they do their own review, they do their own background checks, all that kind of stuff. They look to see if there's any outstanding state taxes. And assuming they're fine with all that, then they approve it and they let you know. And then the license in the new name can be issued.
Even though there's no sign-off from Mr. Smith?
Right, because it just expires.
Right. Yeah, it would just, if nobody was looking for a transfer here...
Once they run the ball and did it before the end of December.
The license would just expire on December 31st, then you'd have a free license for next year.
So you don't, no renewal comes into play when you're transferring because you've transferred?
That's right. Yeah, they would, yeah, exactly.
Going in circles here.
If I may add, what we're essentially asking you to do for us is essentially to hold this license, speaking to the ABCC. What they often will see is, well, if a license expires, is there a rush of other applicants that are seeking to get that particular type of license? And again, we don't expect that we have that in this situation. So essentially, we're asking you to hold this license for us effectively for January 1. We understand we can't use the current license, it's under suspension. We don't think Mr. Smith is going to bother to do anything because he doesn't really have any interest in it at this point in terms of pursuing the filing of the renewal. Essentially, for us, we're hoping naturally that we get your approval and then on to the ABCC. And then January 1, we get this license. That's essentially what we're asking of you.
Okay.
Maybe just to complete the circle, if hypothetically, the ABCC doesn't have it done by the end of December, on January 1, there would be no license for that premises. And so again, no alcohol would be able to be sold. But, I mean, the commission, you know, they're sensitive to these things. They're not looking to shut people down. So I'm sure they'll do their best to get this taken care of in the next few weeks.
Current license on hold, can't use it?
Suspended.
Suspended, thank you. That's what I was looking for.
For your order, yes.
Okay. So then we have a potential new license coming up in January, correct? An open license that the town, right, that the town can either decide to hold or let it be open because isn't there another business, the gas station, that's asking for a license?
I think we have enough that that...
Or is there, or is that...
I think we have enough that that one would get, thank you. That's a different kind of license.
It's a different type of license.
Right.
Oh, that's, that's not like an off-premises.
Right.
Okay.
And you do, because there's an application pending before you from New Flat Penny, you know, you need to do something with that first.
Right.
You can just put this on hold.
Right.
Excuse me, through the chair. The town has 14 Section 12 All Alcohol licenses, licenses that it's allowed. The only, the number issued so far is seven, and there isn't any current pending application for any additional Section 12 All Alcohol licenses at this time.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
So we can issue up to 14, but only seven have said?
Correct.
I would like one. Okay.
Okay.
Could I add something about Title V?
Excuse me?
Could I add something and go back to Title V for a second? I own the house next door, and I have a water contract with the house because it's my well that they, you know, draw the water from.
For the Flat Penny?
For the Flat Penny, yes.
Okay.
I own the house right next to it, which was all owned by one person. So both the house and that place, establishment had one well. So, anyway, I mean, as far as the Title V goes, we had heard in the beginning, when the previous owner had bought the place, that somehow he got around doing the Title V. I don't know if that's true or not. You know, I mean, that's just a possibility. And I also have a water contract that I gotta, you know, I was never informed with new owners, but the water contract is supposed to be picked up by whoever buys the place from the previous owner. You know, so I don't know if these issues have anything to do with this tonight and...
Through the chair, I can just speak to the Title V issue. That is going to be a requirement of the Board of Health, so there is going to be a Title V inspection.
I thought it would be. I just wanted to bring that up.
The water, the water that is between the parties?
Yeah, that's not the...
I think just the lawyers have to get, do the contract work to get that going, so...
You should speak to the applicants maybe tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. Short?
So I'm just wondering if the applicant, if the ABCC exudes or happens to expedite the process and issues their approval mid-December, would that allow the applicant to open or serve sooner?
The license is still suspended.
The license that is currently not even in effect is suspended.
No, I understand, but it will be, it's constructed.
The board is constructing it.
Being transferred, right? So if the transfer is successful and the ABCC approves it, would the applicant be permitted to serve sooner?
That would...
Can the board lift a suspension in that case?
I think they could. We probably, if things get filed with the ABCC, I mean, they already know that it's under suspension. And, you know, I think we should just remind them of that and make sure we do the paperwork correctly so when they've approved it for the new party, you know, what do we need to do to get it up?
Any other questions from the board?
So when will these issues by fire and building inspector be corrected?
How long do you feel you need to have these things corrected?
And will there be another inspection on top of that to ensure that they're done? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We expect within 30 days, we'll have all those addressed.
Okay, so then you would be requesting to be re-inspected?
Exactly.
By the Fire Marshal?
Commissioner and Fire.
And also the Board of Health and the Building Inspector?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So will we be notified when you have an appointment with the Board of Health, Nishoba Board of Health?
Or you could request that.
We can request it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Certainly.
So as far as the liquor license, is there any other information that we need, needed besides the hours? And...
So can you just confirm the hours because I know it went back and forth a few times?
I can do that if you'd like. The request is for, on the common vic and the liquor license, the request is for 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., Sunday through Saturday. And on the entertainment license, the hours are requested from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Thursday through Sunday. Sunday entertainment license is its own separate license, so that would be 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. as well, correct?
Correct, sure.
Okay. All right. So what we need to do, I guess, would be, unless I'm missing something, we need to close the hearing and...
Right.
Close the hearing and then take a vote.
And then you should vote, what do you have, three different, four different ones?
Yes.
Right, yeah, take an individual vote on each one.
Right. Then I will call that the meeting is, the hearing is closed, and it's time for the board to deliberate and decide, make a decision on what we need to do. Do I hear a motion to transfer the license with the information as far as hours and the other items that have been mentioned?
The correcting the code issues, including re-inspections, 30 days to do that with reports back to the town, and then the applicant will report or will notify the town when the appointment is made with the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health.
Will we get a copy of the results of that?
I, I think the inspection report anyway, so we could, you could request the inspection report from Nishoba.
Yeah.
So I'll link that motion.
And Title V, second.
And the Title V, yes.
Second.
And a second. Is there anything else? Any deliberation, any comments, questions?
Do we have to redo this?
Oh, yeah. Is that last year's? It might be. No, maybe not.
No, it's gonna...
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Hearing nothing, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Here is the form to sign, please. We can fill in the other items.
And that, the transfer application included naming new manager?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Joan.
Mm-hmm.
Joan Connor? You need that manager of record?
You got that, too, Mary?
It's on the application.
Yeah.
So through the chair to recap, this will be submitted to the ABCC, understanding they have a process they need to follow. We're going to hold on issuing these licenses until the ABCC concludes its process. Is that correct?
Correct.
Me, Madam Chair, just sort of semantics again. The common vic license and the entertainment ones, technically, those aren't transfers, those are just new license under, a license under a new name.
Oh.
You don't have the same kind of weirdness that you have with alcohol.
Okay. So do we have those ready to be approved also?
You can make the motion on...
No, actually, you don't because the hours mark, no. Common vic you could do, unless you want to put hours on them.
Yes, I think you'll be ready to put hours on them. So if you want to do the common vic next, just as an approval.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the...
Entertainment.
Entertainment license?
The hours would be 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Thursday through Saturday. You got that, Mary?
Well, I have to print this, which I can...
Okay, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Thursday through Saturday. Do you want to do the Sunday entertainment license separate or with this?
Just do them together.
Okay, and then the Sunday entertainment license would be 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. as well.
Okay.
We should approve both licenses.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Okay, comments, questions? Anything else to be said? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Good luck, keep us posted now.
And the license suspension is all taken care of within this? The license just continues on suspension until December 30th, December 31st?
Right.
Okay.
And that license in that name anyway will expire then, but more than likely, the state will take care of changing the name anyway.
Absolutely.
But I'll be in touch with them just to see, we are all on the same page as far as, you know, the license being suspended?
Okay.
To get it open.
Okay. All right. Okay. We do have the review status of the all-alcohol restaurant license, liquor license for Berlin Commercial Realty. Just to reiterate, what you've said is that it will remain in the status that it is.
You can just leave it with the suspension.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. And how are we doing here? Boards and boards' comments and questions, did we?
Yeah, that was the finishes. Oh, Parker has one.
No, I don't. I was just about to say, I think you're done.
Well, can I just ask, I know I had sent you an email, just the follow-up on the cybersecurity.
Cybersecurity, yes. So I missed the welcome webinars last week, but I do have the presentation, and I will be the point of contact moving forward, so I'm reviewing the materials now. And then we'll be disseminating it to the departments.
And I went, so we're in compliance.
We comply with the first step.
All right. Was there anybody else that you know of that...
I have no idea. There were like 70 people on that thing.
But probably no one else from Berlin that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And the names weren't flash, so all I know is there were 70 some people there.
Okay. Just curious, I got the email from Ralph DeLeo also, so I was just wanting to make sure we're not missing something.
I've asked him to include me on future emails, too, so hopefully he does.
Okay, so I believe we do have need for just a quick executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A to...
Nope, nope, Mary shaking her head no.
No? I was going to do those minutes, those...
If you, okay, if you want to do that.
The executive session minutes of July 9th, August 5th, September 23rd, September 30th, October 7th, October 15th, October 21st, and November 4th.
You've been busy.
Yes. So...
Coming back just to go...
And we're coming only back to regular session to adjourn.
Hi, Sakia.
Keith? Aye.
Stone? Aye.
Okay.